Okay, I can see myself. It's almost 5:30. Can I have the roll call, please?
Adam?
Here.
Gannaway?
Gibson?
Here.
Kapler?
Here.
Ormsby?
Here.
Stoltenberg?
Here.
Here. All right, we had minutes from the last two meetings, actually.
Chairman, I'll move for approval of the minutes of the July 20th and August 3rd meetings.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to note that the minutes from August 3rd on pages two and three, say July 20th at the top, and it reflects the meeting adjourned at 9:35, which I think was
A little shorter that day.
Earlier, the July, not the August 3rd meeting.
All right, so we have a motion. We have a couple of corrections noted, and do we have a second then?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from the last two meetings. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, the minutes are approved. All right, so again, welcome everyone to the Plan and Zone Commission meeting for August 17th. I can't believe we're already at the end, middle of August. 2022, we are recommending body appointed by the city mayor and city council to review site plans, land use, and zoning matters. I see a few folks in the way in the back in the audience. The front seats are cheaper, so it'll be cheaper if you sit up front, but I noted we've got more people up here than we do back there, so you guys are gonna have to talk a while extra. So if you have a comment on a particular case, I'd love to hear it. We'd love to hear it at the podium at my right and your left if you would give us your name and input on a case when I recognize the audience. That would be great. And with that, Greg, we will begin.
Mr. Chairman, case 22056 involves a replat at the intersection of 56th Avenue West and 18th Street. Essentially, what we're looking at here is 18th, and then we have 56th Avenue West right there. It is a request by Kevin Kadavy, who is an orthodontist, who already has a location right here, and he was wanting to split lot two of Geepin's 56th Avenue Development Second Edition into two lots. Essentially, what we're looking at is permitted use on one lot, and then we are going to have a use potentially for another office, or maybe conveyance of the second lot. Area zoned C2, it's been zoned that way since 1973. It was actually zoned in C5 up here, and that C1 now has been converted under our new zoning ordinance. Surrounding area essentially is made up of a single-family housing R1, and then other office areas, there is some C3 further to the south and east. And this is typical in this area. The underlying land use for future land use is urban medium intensity, which permits the C2 zoning classification. We go to the original plat for this. It is essentially this lot here, Lot 2, in Geepin's 56th Avenue Development Second Edition that is being replatted. And then the, essentially, you're just splitting this to make it viable for what is existing, and then for what will be proposed here for Lot 2. You're gonna have an access here that's already part of a curb cut coming in from 18th Street for Lot 2. There is an access here for 56th Avenue West for Lot 1. And essentially, the, at some point in the future, as determined by the layout of the entire two-lot site, there will be an access easement that will be part of a site development plan. All the utilities, you have a utility easement extending along the front edge here, 20 feet in width, water and power connections already available. The storm sewer service is available, and the stormwater detention shall be served by Outlot 2. All those accompanying conditions regarding what was at one time Lot 2 of the Second Edition shall follow here. And also, the approval of the site plan does not waive any other city, state, or federal provisions. Goals that are being met by approval, two prior site plan, or I should say, two prior replats have already been done. And in looking at this right here, the final plat also meets comprehensive plan goal C to attract and retain business and industry. So essentially, the process has been conducted twice for plating for this locale. This simply makes for a more efficient layout of the lots in the future. Staff would recommend approval of the replating with the conditions listed in the report. I would ask, are there any questions?
Okay, thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. Mark, anything since publication or presentation?
No, Mr. Chairman, this is pretty straightforward.
Thank you, appreciate that. Questions and comments from the commission regarding this matter? I've got one, or maybe two, Greg. So it says stormwater will be accommodated in Outlot 2. Where is Outlot 2?
North of, uh, two blocks.
It's right there, due north.
Is there a boundary for Outlot 2? That's that whole area back in there, then?
This is essentially it right here.
All right.
It's not gonna change, and that wasn't really part of this plat. It was part of the Second Edition, so this is the area in which you're looking at that outlot.
Okay. And the way the parking on the current use to the west or southwest, that's gonna be the connection point there that's for the shared access easement?
Somewhat up in this area in the north, I think, is where the anticipation is for that connection.
Yeah, it looks like there's a stub coming off the parking area in the other, in Outlot. Yep, right there. Okay. Great. All right, thank you. That's all I had.
I guess I was just curious, looking at that as well, now, like the stormwater drainage and detention there. Detention, like it's gonna be mostly dry, not retention, right? Okay, just making sure, because I know neighbors don't usually like ponds right behind their house.
Well, you have the creek right behind there that separates the two.
Well, I bet they do like that. Mm-hmm. Okay.
Is there others on the commission? Did that answer that? Yeah. Anyone else? No?
Yeah, that might be.
How about anyone in the audience with regard to this matter? Nope? All right, we'll come back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case 22-056, subject to staff recommendations.
Second, the third?
All right, I think Scott got you on that one again. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve case 22-056, subject to staff recommendations. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, 22056 is recommended for approval. Greg?
Next up is Taylor Beswick.
Taylor, all right.
Okay, the next case before you is 22-057. This is a replat for the Springs at Bettendorf, Second Edition. The property is located at the intersection of Devils Glen Road and 53rd Avenue. This is an apartment multifamily development. The applicant is Dad Dan Ewen of Doing Businesses Continental 203 Fund LLC. The current of the future land use shows this area as urban high intensity and is zoned R4, medium density multifamily residence district. The purpose, the main function of this replat is the subdivision is made up of multiple lots and outlots. The purpose is to remove portions of the floodway and flood designated floodplain from the development on, which is located on Lot 1 of the Springs Edition, First Edition. Shown on the map is the current effective floodplain. It, the line delineates not the outlots and the lots within the subdivision, but all of them combined, as the auditor mapped it on the assessor's office. But you can see Crow Creek borders the development to the south and west, and there's a drainage way on the east, and then 53rd Avenue to the north. Shown here is the First Edition final plat. The original plat was configured so floodplain and floodway were outside the development lot. In 2021, FEMA issued new flood insurance rate maps, which changed base flood elevations at the sites slightly, and created the need to re-map or reconfigure these lots. And the purpose behind, is specifically behind the need to reconfigure is due to the financing for these apartments. So the replat shows Lot 1, Outlot A, Outlot B, and Outlot C. The changes are very slight, so materially, the plat is the same. The result of the replat would remove all floodway and 100-year floodplain from Lot 1, where the development is. Staff contends the submitted plat meets all city requirements and recommends approval of the final plat for the Springs at Bettendorf Second Edition, and I can take any questions.
All right, thank you, Taylor. Appreciate it. I'm just gonna look at you, because I don't think so. Yeah, all right, thank you. Questions or comments regarding this matter from the commission, please? You guys are way too easy tonight. Anyone in the audience? There's three of you left out there. Yes, sir. Please.
Good evening. I have some questions on-
You gotta tell us who you are, so we capture that.
Okay. My name is Christopher Janzak, and I am a resident close to that area, and a single-family home. And my question has to do with, I, I'm a little bit confused on the diagram. You talked about 100-year floodplains and some changes, and I don't fully understand what changes you're talking about making. If you could explain, because I know there's a drainage on the east side. Is that what you're referring to? That's really my area where I'm concerned. I live on Pandit Drive, so there's of course a-
I'm gonna paraphrase, and then the technical guys can say if I'm saying it wrong. Nothing is changing with regard to grading or anything else, but the flood maps were updated, and as a result of the updated flood maps, a portion of the property in one of the lots shows up as being in a flood zone, and that, I believe, creates a financing issue because it's now in a flood zone. So if they modify the line slightly of the plat for that lot, it will remove it from the flood, the new flood zones, but actually, nothing's happening out there. Did I say that correctly?
And what is the flood zone qualification for that area? Is that known?
Uh, it's a zone, is it, can you see it? Is it a zone AE? I can't see.
So-
A and AE.
Yes, we have floodway, which is regular, this is all mapped out by a-
Can you pop that map, the colored map of the flood zone back up there, Taylor, if you would?
Sorry, I don't have it.
Thank you.
While he's getting to that, I feel like this gentleman, we would, we would be glad to meet with him in our offices and show him the new flood maps or firm maps and how they may relate to his property. If that's the question, we would be happy to sit down with him and show him those.
That would be very nice. Thank you.
Yeah, we'd be, we'd be more than willing to do that. I'm gonna be gone Thursday and Friday, so it's probably gonna be one of these two guys, if you're coming in this week. But yeah, there are some changes that have been made.
Yeah.
And I, I kinda feel where you're coming from. I think-
I just wanna be aware of what's going on, just so that I'm preparing myself for any changes.
We would be happy to do that with you, sir.
Yeah, okay. I mean, it sounds like there's not anything, I don't know, I'll call significant that's going to occur. You said there's no, there's no-
Yeah, there are no physical changes happening to the property.
Physical changes, but it's a matter of just reclassifying for the sake of-
Correct, exactly.
Yeah, they just wanna move the lot lines over a little bit, and by doing so, that gets their developed portion of their property out of the floodplain.
All right. I mean, they're not gonna, the, the complex is not going to expand or move their, okay, got it. But I would like to meet with you and talk about the floodplain.
Yeah, we'd be happy. Just get with Greg or anybody after here, and we'll, we'll set up a time to chat with you.
Okay, thank you.
And hey, actually, just Google online, search Iowa flood maps, and they have a very good interactive map that you can dial down, very close scaling and everything, and look at your own house and property and see how the maps have changed. They've recently, like I said, 21, they updated those. So if you Google, it's a very easy-to-navigate interactive map that shows you all the floodways.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks. Anyone else? Nope. Okay, back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move for approval of case 22-057, subject to staff recommendations. I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 22-057 replat. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, thank you. 22057 is recommended for approval. You're staying in the saddle, I see. All right.
Thank you, Chairman. The next case before you is 22-058. This is a replat for FG80 Holdings, Second Edition. The property shown is east of Middle Road and north of Forest Grove Drive. Applicant is Kevin Kellner, Doing Businesses Focus Real Estate Development. The proposal is a replat of Lot 5 of the First Edition. The resulting plat will have seven lots, five development lots, and two outlots. To mention, the future land use designation for this site is community commercial, and the current zoning classification is C3 general business. The First Edition included five development lots and two outlots. Lot 5 is the largest lot, resulting in roughly 60 acres. Do you draw? Shown very roughly here. The replat takes that Lot 5 and further subdivides it to six lots. Five of them are developable, and then one is reserved for stormwater. The remaining subdivisions, you have the First Edition and the Second Edition for the whole development, includes three outlots, two for the First Edition, one for the Second Edition, and then it'll have three, sorry, four lots remaining in the First Edition, and then we have five lots in the Second Edition. All of these lots for the replat are, would be north of Competition Drive and north of Forest Grove Drive. Access easements have been platted to provide access to all the developable lots. Blanket access easement exists for Lot A access, which is a stormwater lot. A Lot 2 is shown in detail here as an access easement, so it's the second page of this replat. All utility easements remain materially the same. They have been configured for future development on these lots. All plat notes have been transferred from the origin, from the First Edition to the Second Edition. Staff recommends that this meets all city requirements and recommend approval of the FG, FG80 Holdings Second Edition. I can take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Taylor. Appreciate it. Mark, anything since publication?
Nope, nothing new.
Okay. Questions and comments from the commission, please?
I will note, this is a related case to the 22-059, which is a site development plan for Lot 1 and Lot 2 of the pro, the proposed FG80 Holdings Second Edition.
No one from the commission with any questions?
No.
Okay. Well, we got two left. Anybody back there have anything with this case? Nope? Okay, back to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case number 22-058, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case 22-058 final plat, which is a replat. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Okay, thank you. Case 22-058 is recommended for approval, which takes us to 22-059.
Thank you, Chairman. So as mentioned, case 22-059 is a site development plan for FG80 Holdings Development, located on Lot 1 and 2 of the proposed FG80 Holdings Second Edition. The proposed use is a golf venue and a multi-sport turf fields. As mentioned, the future land use shows this is community commercial, and the zoning designation is C3 general business. For you is the site development plan. So the, the whole site is shown, but the two developments, there's two buildings on two lots. Building A is the golf venue building, shown here. I'll call it the golf entertainment venue building. And Building B is a concessions or ball for all the multi-sport turf fields. Related is the driving range, a golf driving range, four fields that are configured, can be configured in, for different sports. We have a private drive lane, another private drive lane, multi, or bike ped, eight-foot-wide bike ped amenities on either side of the western drive lane, interior sidewalk access, and then a parking lot to the west, and a smaller access parking lot to the east of the drive, golf driving range. I will note, there is a easement across Lot 1 of the First Edition, which connects to Forest Grove Drive, so that will allow access to the east side of this golf entertainment venue. And that's, that's where the dumpster is located, loading dock, and there's a small parking lot, I believe, for employees. As mentioned in the plat review, there are two stormwater detention ponds are going to be used for this development. We have a storm detention pond on Lot A and one on Lot B. And that's the, the upper-level view of the site development plan. Now I'll go into some more detail. Maybe. There we go. Shown before you is the floor plan of the golf building, so Building A. This building will contain, it's a three-story building, containing 58 driving T-lines or lines. In addition, there's a mul, a variety of uses. We have a restaurant, event venues, bars, not bars, one bar, I believe, and then a arcade on the first floor as well. The entrance, the main entrance to the venue is on the west side of the building, so this is the first floor located here. In addition, there's a maintenance space for the driving range and IT space, so we have a lot of different uses combined here. A rendering of the exterior, this is a view of the, the top rendering is a southwest elevation, and the middle one a west, so you're, you can view the entrance, which was noted on the floor plan, here and here. And the bottom, or the lower rendering, is the east elevation, so that would show the east side or the access to like that loading dock and where the dumpster will be. The north-south rendering elevation shows the, the north elevation shows the, looking towards Forest Grove Drive, so the backside of the golf venue. The south elevation shows looking towards, to the north, towards the north, and that would show the T-lines. So that's three stories, open air, for, there'll be doors, and then you'll have obviously the driving range, so you'll be driving off each of those levels. Some more analysis of the zoning. So as mentioned, this is located in the C3 general business zoning district. The two primary uses identified are the golf driving range and the multi-sports fields. Both in our current zoning code are defined as commercial recreation, high impact. Per code, both those uses require a special use permit in the C3 district. They are permitted by right in our C7 district and all of our industrial districts. The whole property is zone C3, so at the other TBK site, the whole property was zone C7, and then later on, areas that needed C3 were rezoned thus. So there's two different ways to go about that. All the other identified uses mentioned in the floor plan are permitted uses in the C3 district. So we will need, one requirement will be a special use permit prior to council approval of the site plan.
Why, he's preparing, let me just kinda elaborate on that a little bit, just all the zoning and-
A few moving pieces here, right?
So when we, when we were approached with this project, we tried to do this in a way that was as efficient as possible, understanding, you know, the timeframe for the developer. And we, we concluded as staff by going C3 and then not having to go C7 and then rezone all these little spots, was go C3 and then just get a couple special use permits, because those are allowed by special use, the golf and the, and the ball diamonds, or the golf and the parking issue. That was actually more efficient bureaucratically, if you will, than having multiple rezonings to come back through for basically a site plan we would have already approved, if you will. So we think that this staying C3 and just having a couple board of adjustment actions is better than coming back to you, you know, every few months ago, oh, we wanna, we wanna rezone this now. C3 gives us the width we need. Everything can fit in it. Sometimes we gotta get a special use, sometimes we don't, but we think that's a better way to do it. I may be wrong in six months, but that's what I think now.
I'm with your logic.
It's unfortunate, but yes.
And this is a unique mixed-use development. I would reiterate that, so it doesn't fit in necessarily in one zoning district. It's got multiple uses going on there. It's similar to the other TBK development, but it is different, has different, has a golf amenity, which the other development is not. So we believe this is the most efficient way, as Mark mentioned. Submitted with the site plan, of course, the off-street parking, the shown in yellow is the off-street parking allocated for the site. 1,186 off-street parking spaces are provided, 432 for the ball fields, and 667 for the golf plaques. Cited in the site plan was the assumptions made for these numbers. They do not match the calculations we have in code. Our code has very basic assumptions for the high-impact, commercial recreation, high-impact, and it's all the same. It's four spaces, or one space for four occupants. The applicant noted they worked diligently with the previous, the TBK development to the west on making a parking plan that would, or consider a high, that entrance area, so we have a drop-off area with multiple lanes located right here. The number of spots, they believe, is deemed sufficient, and using their assumptions for the ball fields, which our code doesn't really adequately address for these large multi, basically baseball sport fields, we just have this commercial recreation and high-impact code. So staff, let me zoom out here. Given that it does not have a direct, we could use the code, interpret the code, and apply it to this, and it would require much, much more parking, but it would not, it wouldn't encompass any of the multiuses inside the, or the multiple, mixed uses inside the golf venue. Staff is encouraging the applicant to apply for a variance for an alternative calculation for what they use, and we deem, staff does believe that- And we deem, staff does believe that there's sufficient parking here, but we want this to be by code, using that, their calculations and not our calculation, or the code's calculation, which does not contemplate a development of this scale, configuration, and frankly uniqueness. So, the applicant has agreed to apply for that variance to use those alternate methodologies and calculations for this parking plan. And this, this site development plan also only contemplates developments on lot one and lot two. Everything else is not being contemplated with this site plan. In the future, more parking will be developed and likely more cross easements or cross easements will be developed, and the parking will be a lot like on many other developments in the city. There'll be a lot of exchange of, or excess parking created through cross easements. One more note, not shown in the parking plan, was the required handicap parking or ADA parking. So, that will be included in the submittal for that parking allocation plan.
I would just add on the whole parking issue, you know, bringing it to you without the Board of Adjustment action is because we think this is kind of self-evident. The situation, as you know, we've, I've at least experienced, and I'm sure many of you have, if you are a user of this mega facility that we have now in our town, those users are sharing the same vehicle. So, if I come from Naperville for my kids' sports tournament and I park at the, across the street at the TBK Sports Complex, and then I use these other amenities, I still have that one vehicle. I still have one car. So, we know there's a lot of shared users going back and forth. So, if, if while Johnny's taking batting practice, I'm hitting golf shots, we don't want to overpark this facility.
You're not watching Johnny take his batting practice?
Well.
Oh, man.
Johnny doesn't like it.
Maybe not. If while Johnny's in the arcade with his friends.
Okay, there we go. You want to be on the record.
But we're not creating another vehicle, so we don't want to, we don't want to overpark this facility. And this is beyond a scale that's contemplated at all in our, in our code. And we would basically be winging it. We think a smarter thing to do is let them use their engineers, use their existing data, put a proposal together and take that to the Board of Adjustment. Board of Adjustment can, can analyze it and staff will help, but to try and apply our code to this, you're going to have a sea of parking as if they're all individual users and we know they're shared users.
How many spaces we have at TBK? Is that about eighteen hundred? Does anybody remember?
It was closer to sixteen hundred.
Sixteen hundred?
Across Middle World.
Yeah. And there's that. And that lot is, even on the heaviest of weekends, I mean, Jeff sitting down here can attest to having, you know, someone who plays baseball. You'll see certain sections that are always full. You know, that western section that's closest to the ball diamonds is always full. You will see people that park on competition because they don't want to park on the other side of the building, and it's just the unique configuration of that versus this one large mass of parking where you're not going to have that, where people are going to try to pick and choose. It's all one singular area.
At one point, I had seen the proposal or the concept of a overpass, pedestrian overpasses.
That is still, still being planned. Yeah, we actually have a, currently have a grant application out for that, but we are committed per our development agreement with the developer to build that. So, that is absolutely another thing that when we get that put in place, I would fully expect TBK to start running shuttles across that. It's going to be fourteen feet wide, so you're going to be able to do that.
The city's committed to building it even if.
Contractually, we're obligated to it. Timeframe may need to slide if that grant doesn't come through, but yes, we are committed to it.
Okay.
So, one more question on this parking, Taylor. You have this area highlighted.
Correct.
And you have a calculation for how many spots are needed? Or, or according to the code as it exists right now, without a variance?
It, the code would have, we would have to make some assumptions, interpretations on the uses, and there's multiple methodologies to do that. As I mentioned, there, the code provides use definitions. The off-street parking schedule has different methodologies for each one of those uses. So, taking the golf venue, the golf venue building, we would have to, some are in square feet, some are by occupants, some are by number of, you know, we have for medical offices, we have exam rooms, but not in this building. It's just a varied approach for each use. It does not contemplate adequately mixed-use development very well. And I believe the developer and using, they have a development across the street that they have history now with, you know, practice. I would base their history, their onsite, you know, they have data too for the parking here. Now, if we just applied it to the golf venue, say the whole, the whole thing is just the golf venue and ignoring the accessory uses, we're within, I believe, I think it's sixty spots. And that's less than ten percent of, or sixty, yeah, less than ten percent of the parking. But that's, I don't think that's an adequate code interpretation.
Sounds like a puzzle.
Mr. Chairman, just to kind of elaborate on what Brent had stated as well, we are obligated to the pedestrian bridge. In addition to that, the amount of trails that we are putting in as part of the Forest Grove project is pretty exorbitant. It's going to be a great amenity, so there will be a lot of walking that does occur. The shuttle service that Brent mentioned, I would be surprised if that did not occur as well. But to the, to the earlier point as well about the fact that this is a mega complex, the third week of July, they had a hundred and fifty-four baseball teams, they had six hundred wrestlers, and they had a soccer tournament simultaneously. And there was still parking in that lot for that venue. And part of the reason why this occurs is, as you may expect, is not all of the occupants are there at the same time. So, it's, it's a bit of a transient customer base. So, they come and go as things maneuver through. So, there's not a period of time where you would suggest that maximum occupancy is going to all be there at once. So, it allows for a lot of fluidity and it does work. And to Mark's point, again, it's anecdotal, but you would be suggesting a pretty exponential amount of parking, and you'd find that there'd be some deserts in those parking lots, if you will, if it was constructed to a traditional parking model, if you will.
And I, I'm wondering, that's the highlighted part. That's not the only parking here.
I did omit the eastern side. That should be highlighted too.
Okay.
But yes, and to your question, there is future parking coming. So, if you look just west of the highlighted area, for example, you know, there is a building there with associated parking that, as Taylor said earlier, will almost certainly have cross parking access.
Right.
Yeah, that's the other thing. If we were to contemplate it with all the future development and all the anticipated cross parking easements.
There's a lot of forward thinking happening.
Yeah, so we're worried about overparking this thing and creating a bunch of flat runoff space. And we just think there's a smarter way to do this and using the Board of Adjustment to kind of do the analysis and help us through that would be staff's recommendation.
So, with parking, maybe this is just me being obtuse. I don't see anything on here that's landscaping oriented, and is that just the case with this zone?
There is a plan. There's a landscape plan. It's in coming slides. I'll show you.
We kind of, we stopped mid course here.
I could see the.
I'm sorry. I should be patient. Better remember that.
Any other parking questions?
No, well, yeah, but I'm. I'm contemplating, do I ask you a question now or, or come back after you're done? But so while we're on parking, I'll just say, maybe it's an assumption. My, my assumption is that, or what makes me feel okay about this as I look at it is the fact that there is so much open ground out there. I'm looking at Kevin Beck there. There is so much open ground. And if you were to find yourself fortunate enough to have a huge parking problem, you have a solution out there. Not just, I don't like cross seasons per se, just to say, oh, well, I met my parking requirement in this new building over here, but I also gave them a cross easement. Well, if it's a very successful new building, it'll need all its parking places and you don't really pick anything up. But my vision is here, if you need additional parking, you got places to find it. Even if it happened to be a, an entire developable lot, you can make it parking if that was your worst problem. So, I feel better about it looking at it that way, that there's plenty of opportunity for solution to a parking problem or challenge. Yeah.
You know, a month ago, we were kind of in the same spot of worrying about kicking the can down to the road to Board of Adjustments for somebody else to make a decision. This doesn't feel like that.
No, you're right. Yeah.
We have an evolving code for something we've never added before.
Yeah.
And for that reason, I don't, I would never compare the two. Feel fine.
Agreed.
It's a thoughtful suggestion and an efficient one to go that route.
May I ask one more question?
Yeah.
This parcel that we're talking about contains four fields, four sporting fields, four baseball diamonds, four soccer fields, whatever you want to call it. Can it be reconfigured for younger kids to be eight fields?
I think a total of six. If you zoom in, Taylor, you can actually see some of the alternative configurations in the field.
You can see the rectangle.
Six, it is six fields. It's noted in the site.
But if I hop across the road, how many fields are over there?
Potentially ten.
Yeah, so, so.
Without the grass fields.
Right.
Yeah.
There's a lot more fields on the other side of the road, which drives a lot more traffic than what we'll see here, at least for the ball diamonds. So, it's not.
And again, you know, the shared users that Mark and Taylor have talked about, having started traveling with my children, the, there aren't many families that are coming with just one child. So, if you've got two sons that are playing baseball, they're almost certainly playing, you know, one might be on this side, one might be in the other. Again, one car, multiple users, multiple places, same ownership. So, I think, you know, a lot of this makes sense.
Yeah, and there, there's not going to be a basketball tournament over here. There's not going to be wrestling over here. There's going to be golf, banquets, or baseball.
I think that's, I think that's correct. And the developers here, you could probably answer your questions more directly, but my understanding is that these are maybe, fields are maybe targeted at a little bit larger player, older player. So, they're a little bigger, so maybe a slightly different audience than the little guys and little girls that are over on the other side. So, different sized fields.
Their games will go faster.
Yeah.
Carry on, young man.
Okay. So, the parking, all right. The applicant, along with the site plan, submitted a lighting analysis for the ball field, the multi-sport fields and the golf, the driving range. Shown here is the lighting, so the foot candles or the illumination levels for the driving range. It will contain thirteen mounted lights of varying elevation between twenty or twenty-eight feet and forty-four feet, mounted on those T, those three stories of T-lines. The lighting plan shows the outer edges of the driving range, so that's adjacent to the parking lot. Hat receiving between point two and a point three foot candles of illumination. For reference, a suburban parking lot showed, it has illumination level of around one foot candle. So, you kind of have a idea. And the lighting plan for the ball diamonds, they have taller poles, of course, for their, for a ball field, and they're showing around one foot candle on the perimeter of those property lines. I will note that we do not, the City of Bettendorf does not have an adopted lighting ordinance, but we can reference others, and this is definitely in line with other ordinances in the region. And staff feels, and of course, the ball fields will be, will be more seasonal and on and off. The driving range will have, be on at night, and I believe that'll be more year-round. And its illumination levels are much lower and the, the lights are elevated at lower, or not as high in the air. And lastly, the landscape plan was submitted. The landscape plan shows a total of seventy-three tree factors per our landscaping handbook. It was required to have seventy-two. The, just to kind of a quick tour, there's maple trees, buffering, the development to the south of this, of this development at the, by the driving range, and interior landscaping on the vehicular use area is shown as well. And that meets our, is above our minimum requirements for parking lot landscaping. And there's more trees along the pedestrian plaza and the drop-off area, which is the entrance to the ped paths to the ball fields. Okay. Given the presentation and the information within, staff recommends approval of the site development plan with the following conditions. Special use permit for a commercial recreation, high-impact use in the C3 General Business District be approved by the Board of Adjustment prior to City Council approval. And then a parking or a off-street parking variance for the reduced parking or alternative methodology be approved by the Board of Adjustment prior to City Council approval. And I can take any questions.
Okay, thank you, Taylor. Mark's done his part. Questions and comments from the Commission regarding this matter? I've got a couple. Hours of operation for the golf venue?
We can. I'll let the applicant answer.
I believe it's one AM. And that'll only be on the weekends, so.
Okay. And while you're there, caliper of trees we put in, in particular at the end of the driving range, do we have a spec for the caliper, tree caliper?
Should be. I do not have that offhand, but I can. We have a listing of the type, tree types and quantity on the landscape plan.
They were.
Maples.
Maple something I saw.
Green, mountain sugar. I would guess a minimum two-inch caliper.
Yeah, they're all two-caliper. Get them growing. Okay.
I think the most important question is, how soon will you be able to utilize this property?
We're hoping to be open the end of November of twenty-three.
Cool. Right when we're all needing to get. Yeah, getting even get outside and tired of Iowa.
Anyone else from the Commission's side?
I just don't know what that is. I just can't remember.
No? Anything else out in the audience? Nope? All right, back to the Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case number two-two-oh-five-nine, subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve case two-two-oh-five-nine, subject to staff recommendations. I would just insert one comment here from, from the Chair. That whole area out there has gotten to be, and I'm stating the obvious, an incredible draw to the community and the area. And I think this is a really nice complement to that existing activity and attraction out there. And I'm also looking forward to what it's going to be out there. I think we've really created a destination here. We and you, Mr. Kellner, thank you. I think it's a great development up there, and I think it's going to be very popular, so. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign? Thank you. Case twenty-two-oh-five-nine is recommended for approval, which takes us to Commission update.
Just real quick, I did, I think, send everybody an email today. If you want to retake or you missed last time at your option the planning and zoning workshop that Iowa State puts on, let me know. Just respond individually to that email, so we don't blast everybody. If I get more than three of you, I got to actually post a meeting, so keep that in mind too. But it's a City Council posted meeting anyway, because the entire.
Is that here then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Video link again?
No, it's going to be live.
Oh, live, okay.
So, just let me know. So, if I do have to do a posting, I'm happy to do it, but I just need to make arrangements.
All right, great. Anything else for the good of the order? No? All right, we're adjourned.